I'm very fine. Appreciate it. Selling a lot of houses or some kind of...
We signed everything that's on tech today. Thank you for helping out.
You're welcome. You're gonna send me copies and everything, right?
It's on my desk. So I can't just scan anything.
Well, you've got to record the release of mortgage before you can file the mortgage. The commissary don't have to be filed. It's just the mortgage.
And they're seeing off the original one, so we will be first again.
Thought you were done with your stuff. But you only make cream in your heart.
I'll eat it like once every three months.
I have the same thing just all the summer.
Like if someone else eats rice cream, they're like, "What? Rice cream?" And I'd be like, "Oh, no."
I don't eat rice.
Thank you.
All right. Let's get this one. I have...
Hey, sure.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Yeah.
Just a sign.
No, no, I know. Pretty close.
We're playing here tonight. What time? Between all their senses.
Yeah. I've heard some minutes.
Because I can't wait.
I've heard six, but it'll go pretty fast.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, hey. Just tell him, James, to come up. Why don't you guys come up during the the public forum?
Should go first.
Okay, good.
Doesn't matter.
Most than a third.
Yeah.
Zero seconds left.
They're waiting.
Just waiting for the on-air sign. There it goes. Welcome, everybody, to the Xenia City Council meeting here on September 28. And to start us off here, we're gonna have Pastor Albert Refit from Victor Life Christian Center is gonna come and pray for us. If everyone please stand if you could this time. Albert, thanks for joining us here tonight.
Thank you for inviting me. It's a pleasure. Let's bow our heads for a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. Lord, we pray for this council. We pray for our mayor, all the various leaders of our community, Lord. We ask your great blessing to be upon them. We pray, God, for a spirit of wisdom and knowledge. Lord, as they govern our city and our community, give them creative ideas and solutions, God, to to resolve the issues in our community and to make good business decisions and to know the difference between the right and the wrong. Father, we just ask for your grace to be upon them as they manage their personnel, Lord, and the various ones, their projects. May they do it with grace. And, Lord, we even pray for their families. Tonight, as we stand in this room, we see these men and ladies. But, Father, they also represent their personal homes and their families and their sacrifices. We ask, God, that your hand rest upon their spouse, their children, grandchildren. Father, we thank you for our great city, our community. And, God, we just invoke your blessings and that prosperity and stability would be in our midst. We ask all of this in Jesus' name, and amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
If you please face the flag, and Councilwoman Dean is gonna lead us in public allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. May be seated. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our regularly scheduled meeting to order at this time, and we'll start with the roll call.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens. Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Branham?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Urshul?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens said that he will be about 10 minutes late tonight, but he will be joining us, so thank you. Next item is approval of minutes of our September 14, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion for that? Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any questions or comments on those before we vote? Okay. Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, great. We have no special presentations tonight, so the next item on our agenda is audience comments. And if you'd like to come and address the council, feel free to come up to the podium and just state your name and address. And I think we have two folks that have tossed their name into the hat for city council this November, and we'd love to hear from you folks.
Do you want me to address? Or are we talking to...
Oh, come on up and stand right here. James, yeah, just state your name and address and introduce yourself to us.
Sure. James Crawford. Address 640 Third Street. Live on the east side of town. Obviously, I get a true reality check on where we're at. Everybody thinks I'm rich because I have a lot of stone around my yard, and I tell the kids it's just because I'm blessed. With that being said, the reason, one of the things I thought about and the reason I'm running for city council is this is an interesting challenge for me. As those of you that may not know, my office is downtown Xenia, right next to the Republican Party. I've been there for about three and a half years operating. I've sold the Allen Building twice. I've now, for those of you that may not know, we're closing tomorrow again on the old J.C. Penny's Building, the building I'm currently in. Sold the Kreske Building. So not by intention or design. It's just I love serving. Commercial seems to have come, fallen into my lap. One of the things for me that I'm proud in terms of my accomplishments is the Xenia School, the board of, the Xenia School Board hired me as their, as their representing agent to find the land for the proposed new school. And I put that deal together, not, these were not people that were selling homes or selling the land. In fact, I thought it was an interesting challenge. We got the deal done, but we couldn't get the votes for the new school, the pro-school. I've worked in a lot of different departments. I've worked for Xenia Super Value for 34 years. I started there at the ground base, basically, you know, just clerically. Worked my way up through management, worked my way up into, into being the superintendent, and then after that, the warehouse manager, was responsible for about 16 super, I'm sorry, 16 supervisors, about 20 clerical, and about 95 union employees. Running the logistics operation was an interesting experience. I was there pretty much to impact culture, to, to, to present challenges and directions from pretty much a harmless perspective. My, my whole MOD mode of operation is to serve, and that works well for me, and has worked for me, worked well for me in my past. I've been a teacher in the gospel for over 30 years, and I've been in various assemblies doing that, that function responsibility. But here lately, I've just been, I think what's more important is how I live and how I impact the community by and large, and how I can serve the community. So that's kind of a little bit about me in a nutshell. There's some other things, but are there any questions?
And during this time, we don't allow questions from council. We just give you guys an opportunity to speak.
I see. I see. Yeah. Just happy to be in a new adventure, in a new direction for both my wife and myself. I believe I bring a different perspective. I don't necessarily come from a rich side of town necessarily, or it's, I'm coming from a reality check of where I know we need a lot of help. We need a lot of consideration. There needs to be some education. I think a lot of things, one of the things I've always thought about is, you know, how do you instill motivation in people? How do you create what the appetites of people, other than just being envious for what you may have, or how, or how effective you can be? And I realize when you start to talk to people, you spend a little time with them, you share and you act like you care, not act like, but you believe you care and you present yourself like you care, you can, you can actually create further interest with people and generate an interest for them to be better than what they, than who they are, rather than me presenting myself with my accomplishments, look what I've done, look who I am, and look where I'm at in the world. Those, those, nobody really is impressed with that, really. They may admire it, but they, they're not impressed. They're impressed when you care. I'm also a board member of, well, I was a board member of the Greater Dayton Real Estate Investors Association for about eight years. I quit that assignment because I felt it was time to do some other things. I'm also a board member of Champions of Change. What we do in that particular organization is we find widows or veterans, or anyone who has served the community in the capacity of service. We're looking for widows that we can serve. Just recently, we exchanged out the, the electrical, the electrical boss for a lady who's a widow, who, you know, the federal Pacificus. Got that switched out for her so that when, when time comes for her to sell, that won't be an issue. We're also putting a fence up in her backyard for her as well. So that's just one of the most recent things we're doing. For who else, that's pretty much it.
All right. Thanks, James. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Faith Cerise. I live at 130 Massey Drive. So I live in a pretty diverse neighborhood, I would say, in Lane Wood. One thing that's really interesting is, I would say, just about everybody there feels very free to tell you exactly what's on their mind. So, so I like that. At least nobody beats around the bush where I live, so it's very interesting. I am originally from Greene County. I went to Beaver Creek High School. I was raised by a blue collar worker, and my mother was a stay-at-home mom and a homemaker. My father was the chairman of Deacons at a Southern Baptist Church, and he always said he could give me exactly what we needed, but he couldn't give me what I wanted. So I started working at 14 years of age under the table. Actually, they thought I was 16 because I always looked older than what I was, and that, so...
Chris, you taking notes back there about the best job?
Yeah. I wish I would have never done that, because now, years later, it's really not paid off at all, but that's okay. Yeah, I did find out that the pastor's kids were letting them stay home on Sunday nights while we were doing Bible drills. They got to stay home and watch first runs of Walt Disney's Black Beauty, and so Goofy Goes on Vacation, so it really wasn't fair. But any rate, I got married back in 1983, still married to the same man, and we moved to the city of Dayton. So I left Beaver Creek, Greene County, because he worked for the city, so of course, there was a residency rule at the time. And then we moved down to Warren County for a while. My husband and I became foster parents, and we were only planning on fostering an older child, because of course, I teach 11th and 12th graders at the Career Center. And instead, we took in a two-year-old, a four-year-old, and a seven-year-old, and then we, we never looked back. We adopted them. And then, so that was a real blessing. I was adopted as well, so I wanted to give some other children a chance like I had. So it was really a blessing for me and my family, so just wanted to repeat that service. I think there's something to be said about people that are nurses and probably educators, you know? I always said if I got a T-shirt, it would say, "I'm emo and I want to help someone," because that's what we tend to do. We want to help everybody. So I've been really lucky in my education. After graduating Beaver Creek, I went on to Clark State and Springfield and got an associate's degree in nursing, and then went on and got my bachelor's from Andrews University in Marion Springs, Michigan, here at KCMA, and then got my master's in nursing at Wright State and got a great education there, so just went ahead and got my master's degree in education. I felt like if I was gonna be an educator and an effective one, I really needed to know how to do that role, so I wanted to really hone those skills. So, and of course, I've been serving at Greene County now for 25 years. Love it. Cannot ever imagine going back to Miami Valley Hospital after being there. It's just, it's really neat to kind of come full circle. I'm now having children of the parents that I had in some of my first classes, so it's really neat to see, and we're getting on even to third generation, so it's exciting. So I also am an MRC member, the Medical Reserve Corps, so I work with Dr. Don Brandon at the Greene County Combined Health District. He's doing wonderful things there. So again, it's just exciting to get back to my community, see what we can offer and do and help. I obviously am not a business owner. I've been on planning and zoning for a number of years. I don't know why, but I really enjoy that work. I like reading the ORC and the OAC. It's just interesting. I don't know why, I just, I'm just kind of different that way, I guess. But any rate, I'm just really humbled to be here and meet you all. I know some of you have met me before, when I interviewed once before, but I wanted to come back and just reacquaint myself with you. So I just appreciate your time and thank you for your service and what you do, so thank you.
Thanks, Faith. Thanks so much. Do we have anyone else that'd like to come and address the council at this time? Okay, we'll close out the audience comments. Next item on our agenda is old business. The first item is ordinance 2023-29. That's authorizing the sale and grant of a standard highway easement to the Ohio Department of Transportation on a portion of city-owned property directly across from 1831 North US Route 68. This was introduced by Councilman Scrivens at our last meeting, and we'll be having a public hearing. Mr. City Manager, would you just give us a quick overview here before we have a public hearing?
Absolutely, sir. This is a measure that would authorize the grant of a standard highway easement. This is to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the roundabout project, which is being installed at the intersection of US 68 and 235. Again, city-owned property there is part of our well field, and I think the, the amount the city would be paid is whopping $809 for this very valuable tract of land.
Sure. Great. Thanks so much. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. You can come and address the council. Remember, this is not a question-answer session, but if you have any concerns or anything in favor or against this ordinance, please come and address the council at this time. Seeing that we have no one coming at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And as I said, this was introduced by Councilman Scrivens.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for passage.
Do I have a second on that motion?
No, second.
Seconded by the mayor. Great. Any questions or comments before we vote here? I just want to commend the folks at Xenia Township and County Engineer and the folks that are putting in the effort to get this roundabout put in. I know that's a dangerous intersection there. There's been a lot of concern about that, especially with the new state park that's gonna be going in, literally just about half a block away or a block away from that intersection there. Hopefully, it will help slow down the traffic there and make it a little bit safer, so anything we can do to, you know, be a part of that and help out with that, I think, is a great thing.
Just words out of my mouth.
There you go. All right. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great. Under new business, first item is ordinance 2023-30. This is a emergency ordinance, and this is amending ordinance 2023-27 to provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Xenia, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Council President. There's an agenda item here in just a few moments that describes the need for this appropriation ordinance in much greater detail, related to the East Second Street work on the, on the infrastructure there. I think the city manager's also sent an email to council trying to keep you kind of informed about what's happened with, with that project. But the contractor encountered some issues. The, the contract ended up being terminated, and, and staff is requesting a waiver of bidding to a new contractor here later this evening that would allow us to get this thing completed and then allow for paving of the road next year in 2024. So we are requesting an amount of $71,000 to be appropriated in the sewer fund, and $90,000 additional dollars to be appropriated in the stormwater fund in order to facilitate the completion of that project.
Thank you so much. Do I, yes?
Mr. President, just prior to introduction of this, just one additional clarification, because this, as the finance director indicated, pairs within the, with another agenda item. This is not appropriating the additional monies for the purpose of additional expenditure. It's actually replacing a portion of the original amount that council approved for, from our general capital fund. The scope of work has changed, and as a result, the, the work being done is all water and sewer. We don't want those general fund...
So we'll be appropriating out of those funds.
Yes, that's, that's, yes.
Great. All right. Do I have a motion for approval?
Send it.
Moved by the mayor. Have a second by the, by Councilman Scrivens?
Yes.
Any questions or comments before we vote on this? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is Resolution 2023-049. This is accepting the amounts and tax rates certified by the Greene County Budget Commission for 2024, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying said levies to the Greene County Auditor. Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Council President. Earlier this year, the, the city council approved a tax budget to be submitted to the county auditor's office. After the city submits that tax budget, the Budget Commission then certifies rates to the city, essentially giving us an estimate on what our current tax rates would produce in the way of revenue. And the ORC, Chapter 5705, requires that city council accept those rates via a resolution, so that's what we're requesting here tonight. The total amount of estimated revenue from a property tax standpoint being estimated is $2,287,000. That is an increase of $415,000 in comparison to what they certified last year, and I know there's been, you know, a good bit of information in the news about the assessed values of properties going up, and that in part is responsible for some of these increases that we're seeing and what's being certified. So the, the increase that we're seeing is on inside millage. It doesn't impact outside millage. In fact, the voted millage actually has a smaller effective rate here moving forward as the values increase, but, but it's an additional $415,000 in comparison to what was certified last year. They also, the, the county auditor provides an estimate on local government funds, and I think it's worth noting that while the state increased the formula, the percentage, they also reduced the taxes, and the net effect of that is actually a reduction in the local government funds to the city. It's not a very significant reduction, but it's a reduction nonetheless, about $863,000 this year compared to $891,000 that was estimated and certified last year. So we are requesting tonight that council, that council pass this resolution, accepting the rates, so that we can get that over to the county auditor.
Great. And I just mentioned that, that this process, once again, is regulated by the higher revised code, and it's also part of what goes on with the Budget Commission, too, is their allocation of the inside millage, and this is information that's required by them. There's 10 mills of, of property tax that, that is, actually tracks the, the audited values of the properties, and those, those are the only 10, 10 mills that do that, and those are allocated by the Budget Commission to municipalities or county or schools and those types of things. So to allow us to continue to participate in that, we, we have to follow this process here as per, per the state law. So, great. Thanks. Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a motion to accept?
Send it.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Seconded by the vice president. Any questions or comments before we vote?
The state.
The state giveth and the state taketh. Bless it be the name of the state. There you go. All right.
I don't like naming my stuff.
That's right. All right. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great. Next item is Resolution 2023-050. This is authorizing the submission of an application for federal funding through MBRPC for the South Detroit Street from Miami Avenue to the city's Southern Corporation Limits, and this is a rehabilitation project. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. The Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission has announced solicitations for their next round of funding through the Transportation Improvement Program. The funds available through MBRPC are regionally controlled federal funds. This includes the Surface Transportation Program funding, congestion mitigation near quality program funding, and transportation alternative program funding. After discussion and evaluation with my office, our engineering staff is recommending submission of an application for, for funding to rehabilitate South Detroit Street. As indicated, this would be from Miami Avenue to the city's Southern Corporation Limits. Staff opted to seek funding for this particular project, as this would allow completion of Detroit Street all the way through the city, from the northern corp to the southern corp, so to finish out that stretch of work. Staff also selected the project because a significant portion of the adjoining sidewalk and ADA rants have already fairly recently been replaced, which eliminates a lot of that upfront cost that we would have to secure that grant funding, so that's a benefit. If awarded, the fund, if awarded funding for the project, construction would be expected to begin in 2029. Again, these are multi-year cycles as part of this process. The estimated total cost at this time is $1,471,391. Staff will submit a grant funding request of $1,516,000 to MBRPC. That would make our local match $456,131. This evening, we are requesting approval of the resolution that would authorize submission of the grant application, and we'll see how that works out with your concurrence.
Great. Thanks so much. Do I have a motion for approval?
Send it.
Moved by Councilman Dean. Do I have a second on that?
No, second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any questions or comments before we vote?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Scrivens.
Mr. City Manager, what'd you say the local match would be?
$456,131. And that's at today's number, so just bear in mind that in the environment that we've seen, that could, that could grow, yeah.
Just like to comment while I still have the floor. That makes the whole artery north to south through Xenia complete, and then when we get south Main Street done, all of our arteries will be done. We'll be ready to work on the Platts and people in the neighborhoods. So this is great news, but people have to be patient. This is 2029. Thank you, Mr. President.
Questions or comments? I just want to commend Chris and his staff for, and these are years out, and getting these applications in, and our, our folks in the engineering department and, and others have been really successful in getting these, these grants applied for, and they really helped us to be able to augment the, the street funding, the $800,000 we have each year. And like you said, most of the major, you know, arteries in the, in the city, without these grants, we would not have been able to repay these things. So anyways, thanks, Chris, for your guys and doing that, and looking forward to, to 2029, getting the rest of the arteries done then, so. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
So anyways, thanks, Chris, for your guys and doing that. And looking forward to 2029, getting the rest of the arteries done then. So, all right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brandon?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great. Next item is Resolution 2023-051. This is authorizing the execution of a contract with Kensington Excavating Incorporated for the completion of the Country Club Drive Water Stub and East Second Street Sanitary and Storm Sewer Improvement Project and waiving competitive bidding. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. I want to take a little more time to explain this because it's a little more involved. Staff is recommending Council approve this resolution that would waive competitive bidding and authorizing this, authorize this contract with Kennison Excavating. This would complete this East Second Street Sanitary and Storm Sewer Improvement Project. This would be for not to exceed cost of $353,820. The work associated with this contract was part of a larger rehab project authorized by Council and undertaken earlier this year by a different contractor. The original project included utility work at the intersection of Detroit Street and Country Club Drive. That was completed by the prior contractor earlier this year. Upon attempting to complete the balance of this contract work on East Second Street, the contractor encountered some unanticipated obstacles that set their work behind. In the end, the contractor agreed to terminate the project contract for convenience based on mutual conversation. And our engineering, maintenance staff evaluated the prospects of completing the work in house, but due to scale and urgency of completing the project before our winter weather sets in, didn't feel that they had the ability to do so. They evaluated options, and they felt that in the interest of trying to get the project done to reduce the inconvenience to residents, make sure that there's continuity in those services, those utility services, they wanted to seek alternative options in terms of contractor. They requested a price quotation from Kennison Excavating, who had been doing project work in our community this year that our staff was very pleased with. Based on that knowledge, experience, and cooperation by this particular vendor, Kennison, we are confident that the remaining work can be done quickly this fall and effectively. And so we are recommending that we proceed with consideration with Kennison. They submitted a price quotation of, as I said, $353,820. This includes the base bid and alternate one to complete this remaining project work as described in your packet materials this evening. The contract is awarded by City Council. Funding from this evening's previous appropriation ordinance must accompany the award to cover these additional sanitary sewer water, stormwater funding charges. And that would allow us, again, to avoid those general fund expenses. So given that the current date is nearing October, the fall season is well on swing and winter is approaching, we think there's urgency in the interest of health, safety, and welfare of our residents to get this done. So that is justification for recommending the waiving of competitive bidding to authorize the contract with this particular vendor. So happy to answer any questions, but again, staff recommending the resolution to see that we can authorize the project.
Do I have a motion for approval? Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Dean.
So do we, to help execute this quicker, do we need this as an emergency?
Yeah, the resolution will take effect immediately under our, under the new charter provisions.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just wanted to thank, thank staff for their work on this and seeing the need and finding a way forward is very much appreciated.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Scrivens, go ahead.
How the, how the staff itemized the expenditures, this guy's really on the ball.
Great. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brandon?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urshul?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great. That completes our new business. Next item is appointed official reports. Mr. Finance Director?
I have nothing else for you this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Finance Director? Ryan, how much of inside millage do we currently have coming to the city?
Well, there's about, somewhere in the neighborhood of $450,000 in revenue, or sorry, inside millage.
Inside, yeah. I'm just, how many mills is that?
3.2.
3.2?
Yeah, 3.2 inside mills. Yeah, and then the effective rate of our outside millage is like 0.82 now or something.
Right, that was a 3.5 mill authorized back in '79 that has an effective rate of 0.8.
Yes, like right around 0.8, yeah.
Right.
Correct.
Great, thanks. Madam Law Director?
I have nothing to add this evening, thank you.
Great. I have one question for you.
Okay.
So we have four council positions open as of January 1st of 2024, and we have five candidates for those positions that have been certified by the Board of Elections. And since the protest date has passed by, that certification will stand, and those folks' names will be on the ballot. But enlighten all of us up here as to what we can and can't do as council members in this, in this election for our city charter.
Can and can't do as far as what?
Of endorsements of...
The charter specifically prohibits you endorsing any candidates or any city issues. That's a charter provision. As far as any local township, county, state, there are no prohibitions. I have confirmed that with legal at the Ohio Secretary of State's office. But you are not allowed, as council members, to endorse for against any issues, city issues or city candidate.
Yes.
You're prohibited under the charter.
Got it, yeah. So once again, that's a charter regulation. It's not an Ohio Vice Code. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is, I know we, with the five folks coming up, some incumbents and some new folks, I just want to make sure none of us that are currently on council are getting crossways with our, our city charter. So that would include things like putting yard signs in our yards for a, that would be an endorsement right for a council person?
I don't know that that would rise to the level of endorsement, I, because that may be more an expression of your own free speech. Now, I can, I can check that with the Ohio Secretary of State's office specifically.
Sure, that would be great. Yeah, yeah. I just, and Donut and I have had an opportunity, had some private discussions on this. I just want to make sure that was being made public and we all had the ability to do that. So I would encourage anyone, if you have any additional questions about that, feel free to give Donut a call. And we just want to make sure we're staying on the right side of the law in terms of the context of our charter. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions for the law director? Great. Mr. City Manager?
Just two brief items this evening. First is a reminder that the city will be hosting our Harvest on Main Festival on October 14th, Saturday, from noon to 5:00 p.m. All kinds of activities that will work in conjunction and really before the Oktoberfest event that will be held on, on South Detroit Street. So we encourage folks to come out for that family portion of activities hosted by the city in the morning, then a lot of live music and entertainment for the evening. Also, just a quick reference, there was some scuttlebutt that the city was made aware of via media inquiry about someone who had posted the smell of chlorine. We have no reports of any incidences from a commercial standpoint of any spills. There's nothing in our water system that is of concern. We did flush our hydrants this week, so there's the potential that residual chlorine, chlorination that is as part of that treatment process was detected. But again, nothing of concern from our perspective. So we don't want to minimize concerns that people have. But again, I think there was maybe it's a media push that wasn't quite relevant and just really not an issue. Finally, we will be closed to public business. Staff will be in service, but closed to public business on Columbus Day, which I believe is October 9th. So we just remind our public, if you have business with the city to plan accordingly, our staff will be in service and training that day. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Okay. Let's go ahead to council comments and reports. Councilwoman Dean?
Nothing.
Council Brandon?
Just want to mention that BZO is canceled on the 23rd due to lack of agenda items. That's it.
Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Few items. First, I want to congratulate, I understand we have two new firefighters that the mayor swore in. So I want to congratulate them and welcome them aboard. Firefighters and EMS, I think they came prepared to do the job here. Also, I was contacted by Mr. Arlen Jackson at 2204 Capistrano earlier this week. Apparently, he had sewage backflow in his basement, and I directed him to city staff to see if we can get the process squared away. Also, the Xenia Buccaneers, four and two on the year, are hosting Detroit Trojans Friday night at Veterans Field at Doug Adams Stadium. And the game is also being broadcast on Spectrum One TV at 7:00 p.m. So I might have to watch the Buccaneers on, on a 51-inch TV, 55-inch TV. Other than that, Mr. President, I wasn't here to hear Mr. James Crawford. I do plan to get a chance to become acquainted with him. I did get a chance to hear Ms. Solis, and I'm very impressed with her. And I'm glad that we have more people running than we have seats. That gives our citizens a choice. And that's what democracy is about, is your choice to make. And with that, Mr. President, I yield my hand.
Great. Thanks, Tony. Councilwoman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything else to add.
Mr. Vice President?
All right. Another echo with Councilman Scrivens. Thank you for both of you guys being here tonight, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Reese. And really appreciate your stepping up to serve our community. Also, just to remind citizens, tomorrow's homecoming for Xenia High School. And I believe they have festivities starting at 6:00. So look forward to the Buccaneers. Hopefully, they'll pull that off, and that'll be a great win. And your next planning and zoning meeting for Xenia will be October 19th. We'll actually have another regular meeting before that. That meeting was moved from the 11th due to conflict with dates to Thursday night. So that'll be 6:00 here in council chambers. Other than that, I appreciate everybody watching tonight and look forward to seeing you guys next meeting. Thanks.
Great. One more comment from Councilman Scrivens. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Just one, one item I didn't include. I had a chance last Saturday to attend the Women in Recovery Program, Addiction Recovery, and the Hope Hub of Xenia sponsored it, Ms. Cynthia Strimple. And I just want to say that it was a pleasure to attend that event, and it opened my eyes to a problem that we can easily solve if we show a little love to our fellow man. Thank you, sir.
Great, thanks, Tom. All right. And Mayor?
Thank you. A couple of things to go over, just to report on the things I've been doing out in the community. On the 15th, I had an opportunity to speak at the STEAM School in honor of Constitution Day, had a lot of great discussion with a lot of 6th through 9th graders about what local government looks like and how they can be involved. We had a very heated debate about whether or not the charter should be changed to include 2:30 naps for everyone. So very good discussion.
I, by the way, am in favor of that.
What? There's a lot, there's a lot you got to consider.
That's right.
Also, on that day, I had an opportunity to meet with Dave Burrows with the DDC, with the Dayton Development Coalition, and can just continue to be, I'll say it in their face a little bit, about ways they can be doing more site visits here in Xenia and things that we have available and trying to just make sure that I'm advocating for the community. On the 16th, the Hope Hub, the event at Schindler, and that was really a beautiful event. I had a lot of testimonials of what the Hope Hub is doing and ways that we can support them as a community. That same day, got to go out to Central State for the 1922 Swim Event. They were doing the Sorority Sigma Gamma Row put on this event, and they did swim lessons with Maritza McClendon, who is the, she was the first African-American woman to be on the U.S. Olympic team, the swim team. And she was there, she brought her medals, and let my girls wear it, and let other kids wear them, and they got to swim with her. It was just an amazing event. So they did a phenomenal job. That same day, the 16th, ribbon cutting at Jim City Colo, it's a new business here in Xenia. She's been in Centerville for quite a while, but she actually lives here in Xenia, and she was really excited to bring her business back home and to support our community. That evening, there was a fundraiser for Michael's House, got to attend that for a little bit and just support the work that Michael's House is doing. On the 17th, Home Church here in Xenia had their two-year anniversary, so I had an opportunity to go to there and to thank their church for what they're doing in Xenia. They are very impactful in Xenia. Pastor Chaz and his wife Val, they do so much for, for this community. On the 18th, the Assistant City Manager and I went over to Athletes in Action, and we got to meet the mayor of Tirana, Albania. His, I won't pronounce his name correctly. My version is Aaron, but I know that's not quite right. He was visiting for the, just for 24 hours, but he has 13 people here from his country training at AIA, 13 Olympic hopefuls who were doing training there. So it was a really neat opportunity to meet him and to talk about what, what they're doing with their, with their sports program. The 19th Neighborhood Night Out, want to thank the staff for all their work. That was an amazing night. Ran out of food, I think, the first time ever that we've run out.
It was a 45 minutes, yeah.
It was, it was very crowded. It was a really good night. Mr. Portchner was there, working on the next plan, getting impact from the community, and he did a great job. On the 21st, had an opportunity to go up in a KC-135 for the boss flight, boss lift flight program. It was an amazing opportunity. The 121st out of Rickenbacker, the refueling wing, and they just, we refill the C-17 in the air, so you can all be jealous for a minute. It was, it was an amazing experience, but just seeing what they do. And they are, they are gone all the time. They are working all the time. So just an incredible wing. On the 22nd, Shawnee Elementary, they did their annual walkathon, so got a chance to go there and high-five all the elementary kids and congratulate them on their work. They, they do a fundraiser, and it's so fun to see the kids out there and the different people, the businesses and the churches that support them. So, great job, guys. On the 23rd, went to Old Timers Festival for a little while. It was a good turnout, a lot of fun walking around there. On the 25th, we had an opportunity here at the city to host a meeting with United Way just to brainstorm some ideas and some projects, kind of looking down the road of ways that we could better some of our parks and some other ideas. So it was just a, it was a good brainstorming meeting. On the 26th, went to the, the DDC's Regional Economic Update, which was in Fayette County, and got to hear from the folks at Honda LG. And again, just the partnership between Fayette County and Clinton County and the ways they're working together in the many projects, Value Tech's Past, Value, yeah, Value Tech's and is it Pastalini? I don't think I ever say it right. The work that they're doing in Fayette County and how that impacts even our community and the jobs coming this way, it was just really exciting to hear. That evening, represented the city as mayor for the Clark State Presidential Awards Banquet. On the 27th, there was a ribbon cutting for Clothes That Work that's here in Xenia. Clothes That Work is a great organization that's actually out in Dayton, but they now have a mobile unit. They're calling it the Wow, the Wardrobe on Wheels. So that mobile unit will now be on Leadbetter where Job and Family Services are. So people who are looking for work, who are interviewing, who need a hand up, can go there in their mobile unit and do some shopping for clothing, get some job training. This is a partnership with United Way. So they did the ribbon cutting on the 27th. It's a really, really nice, it's a great idea, it's a, it's a great win for our community. That same day, I had an opportunity to host the Mayor's Lunch here in Xenia. I know we do that every month, but I always like to mention when they come to Xenia because it's great to show off our community. So they came to Tony's Brothers, and that was the first time all of them had eaten there. And they'd not eaten at the Kettering one either, so it was really fun. They were all very excited and said they would be back. And then on the 27th as well, I tried to be there just in time for Bertie Baze for his swearing-in, our newest police officer, so at least got to shake his hand and congratulate him. So very exciting, great, great job, chief. One thing to note for Harvest on Main, our XREC meeting has been canceled, it's coming up, just because we did not have agenda items. The only thing that we needed to note was that we could still use a couple volunteers for Harvest on Main. So if you are interested, I know my XREC group is trying to put together some volunteers, but I could still use a couple more to help with that day. So if anybody's interested, they can contact myself or Michelle Johnson, our city clerk, and we'll put you to work. It's from 12 to 5:00. We really need some volunteers from 10 to 12 to help get the vendors set up. And that is all I have.
That's great. Thanks so much. Everybody should have gotten a Xenia communicator in the mail, came out just today. And once again, I think the participation, everybody had an opportunity to participate in the next plan. And there's instructions on how to, to do that online. We had our, Brian had his first public community forum. And out there at the, the new meeting room on Leadbetter, the county meeting room, and about 25 folks were out there and went and sat in on that as well. And it was just, it was a good evening to get some feedback from folks, but we got lots of other opportunities on that as well, too. So I would just encourage everyone to take some time, take these surveys, get your inputs into what you'd like to see coming in the city over the next 10 years. And this is, this is a very important document for us to revise the current city tenure plan to go out for the next 10 years as well. Had a good opportunity to meet with Judge of our municipal court, Judge McNamee, today, and a lot of good things for us to be able to continue to collaborate on. I just want to commend the, the county administrators and county administrator and county commissioners on their work with us on getting the updates for the agreements on the dispatch center as we're moving forward with that. And also looking for the, potentially an update to county-wide dispatch agreement and funding structure for that as well, too. There's, there's a mandate from the state to put together a county-level board and